...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is your pleasure with the... I knew that we accepted as presented. That was the agenda?
Yes.
Second of favor?
We're anticipating their meeting.
Oh, so. Next select board's meeting is August 17th, 5:30 here at the town hall. Madam Susan, any comments, announcements?
None at this time.
Alright. So we are going to get right into business item number one. Request to amend the land use ordinance concerning public and private recreational areas. So Carrie Nelson, Albert Nelson, Kathy Plaine, and Sabino Rowe attended last month's planning meeting to discuss the property on Dan Coe Row, map R-06, law 44A that is currently listed for sale. The authorities and others in the neighborhood are concerned as to what the uses are allowed as there is a significant amount of acreage for the property. The planning board identified the property as being located within rural residential zone and would qualify for any uses allowed within this zone as outlined in the land use ordinance under the table of use regulations. It was noted at the time that some of the jurisdictions and the ordinance are vague. Discussion involved a principal use be eighteen, public and private recreation areas involving minimal structural development. The town administrator agreed to reach out to the town attorney for clarification and Jensen Guard's response to inquiry is provided for review. Do you want any copies of this, Julie?
I do have copies.
I brought copies. They don't need packets, I gave them.
Attorney for you?
Suzanne?
You want to add the attorney review?
I have the attorney saying so it does, it came from Christine.
Okay. Does anybody here, anybody else want a copy that's sitting out there?
Those who are with us already have copies.
Okay. Are you reading? David, do you need one?
Also.
So, it sounds like from the attorney, the land use ordinance does not define the term recreation. So in deciding whether or not a proposed use qualifies as recreational, the planning board should apply a customary dictionary definition. The term campground is also not defined in the ordinance, although campgrounds appear to be permitted in the high-density shoreline district. Is this work that we'll be working with?
MCAG.
MCAG and?
Yes.
We can work on these definitions based on Sally's recommendation?
Yes, so in a situation like this, it would be something that MCAG would probably come up with the language and then it would be reviewed by Jensen there to make sure that it was accurate.
But I know there's, so let me pause. Did you hear they wanted to put a campground in?
We have not. We know that the land is for sale. We reviewed the ordinances and we find the wording is very muddy. Our concern is if somebody goes in and buys the land and starts the process and wants a campground or something similar, at this point, a lawyer could look at your ordinances and say, "That is allowed." So we'd like to get something in place to have the language looked at, to be defined properly. Hopefully for a moratorium law, if we can't change the language through a special meeting or something. So something can't come in and happen before wording can happen.
Well, I agree with you. I don't think it's just this particular area. I think if our ordinance is muddy, we need to clean them up and clear them up in the whole town. So I think this is actually the perfect timing.
So is this, I guess, I'll pose the question and if you have any information, this is what we're discussing right now. Is it something that we want to expedite before a town meeting if it's that important? Or is it something, can a moratorium happen without a town meeting? No?
I'm very concerned, actually. We have a muddy ordinance, that's true. I'm concerned, this piece of property is apparently privately owned and would be privately owned. What is to prevent a group of neighbors deciding what I can do on my land before an ordinance is written?
Well, I think, you know, campground to me is a business and then you're creating in a residential area, a business, a spot of land that's generating revenue. But it's not listed as a commercial use. It's listed as a recreational.
Right. If a campground is considered a commercial use, it will be allowed.
But so that's, so we need to kind of figure out that what is, I mean, to me, a revenue-producing, multi-use, significant amount of different people creates, you know, I don't know if it's, should a contract come in tomorrow for one or a day late? So I guess my point is, is it something that we want to expedite? Or?
I'm saying that without legitimate discussion and town consideration, it is inappropriate for us to decide what to do with our private property.
It's for all property?
It's the same question that came up when there was concern about the treaties being put around the old meeting house. I don't think it's appropriate to rush into something because we are alarmed about a possibility that has not been made by a potential buyer who is not yet known. It seems previous to be alarmed.
I think it behooves the town to set our boundaries before we need to have them set, forcibly set. You state your name.
Oh, my name is Stacy Hevers-Carter. I live in West Bath. Kind of late, so I missed the summary of what's happening, but I can see what you're saying, but I think it's prudent and wise to actually define things ahead of time so we're not scrambling when something comes in that could be, well, in my opinion, this would be problematic, but I agree, it is, campground, how could it not be a business if you're charging people to use land?
And that is, that would be a commercial use. The ordinances, all of the land use ordinances are in the process of being considered, rewritten, and clarified, and I don't see that in this particular instance, we need to hurry up. We're in this position, I feel, because historically, things have been done in a hurry-up manner and we have not been clear enough in our definitions. So let's take the time, do it right. When the planning board meets, if such an application comes before them, they can decide that it's a commercial thing, not subject to what would happen in that particular area.
Perhaps we just define, as it says here, although campgrounds would be permitted in high-density shoreline, maybe define that as only permitted, change one word, to only permitted in the high-density. High-density, not residential.
Joey Powers, can you define high-density?
I have to have the ordinance book here with me to give you my definition.
Well, you just like, where would that be? Would that be applied to this parcel of property?
I have to look at the definition and look at where on the map it is. Off the top of my head, I don't know that. I don't want to read your guess.
It's right there on the wall, isn't that ordinance zones?
Yeah.
It's not there, it's on the wall, it should be on the wall.
Yeah, I just, I just don't understand the difference between high-density and...
Well, high-density, where is this? This is the...
Up right is the red.
Shoreland.
It's the red, isn't it?
High-density is here, along the shoreline of Sabino. It's not on Dan Coe, right here.
So it wouldn't apply?
No, high-density is down here at Brinkhampton Shoal and Purge Point. We're long down here.
So perhaps we just refine where it is allowed.
Okay, with the high-density...
So does that also have to go through a town meeting?
Okay, you know where the woodlands is?
Yes.
Okay.
Three cars.
And with the main houses?
Any changes?
All of that land, steps in back of that, the wood area, all the way across the back of us, across our company names and back of us, all of that's considered the high-density. That's all. Nothing down here in the field, but all of that up there, so all that could be made campgrounds.
Okay, so our major concern is that wording is in that section of the ordinances and it's muddy wording. It could be interpreted in several different ways. So we're asking you as our whole neighborhood, and believe me, this is only part of us. The whole neighborhood is concerned about the possibility of a campground going in. We couldn't get assurance from the planning board. They couldn't clarify for us. The lawyer tried to clarify and didn't find too much more than what we already knew. So we're asking you for some support in either having that worked on or seeing if there's some way that a moratorium could be put on that type of situation. It is being worked on. The land use ordinances are being worked on.
But not until October. You know, if this is, if there's enough of the community that feels it warrants a special meeting, then maybe that's something we look at. I don't know if we want to put off something that our residents feel very important and strongly about.
We know that one neighborhood feels about it, that it's important. We don't know how the town feels about it. And I think that to make a decision tonight is premature to be alarmed before we have any inkling of who a buyer is or what could be used. I think that is premature. We make mistakes when we panic and make decisions prematurely. The project is being worked on. We're certainly aware of the number of areas in which the ordinances are vague. And part of that, as I say, has been because they have been done piecemeal instead of whole, in a holistic way. If we do another piecemeal, then we're going to run into the same kinds of problems. We're working on it. What kind of problems have you run into that you're thinking about as we discuss this particular? Any number of discussions over the years with the planning board about what a particular ordinance means and the difficulty of enforcing ordinances that are not clearly written. Those happens way too frequently in the years that I've been on the board. Sir, I'm sorry.
Albert Nelson?
Thank you.
The town wouldn't have to deal with it directly, but the neighborhood would. So therefore saying, well, the whole town wouldn't have to, but our neighborhood would. We've got about 100 and some odd people down there that would be directly involved with that.
But this does need to go to a town vote.
Oh, I understand that, that I understand.
I don't want any, any pause.
But I'm just trying to say that it shouldn't just be saying, oh, well, wait for something happens.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that give the process time to work through so that it can be done well, accurately, and enforceably.
I'm not opposed to, we've held emergent town meetings. We did it for the business development area to clarify main farms and protections and stuff that happened over there. And happily, what about that? If we have enough concern from a community, and I don't know what warrants enough in that term, I think we should offer this as an option as well.
This lady, would you?
Hi, Anne Childs, not on Dan Coe, but near Blah. And I would like to clarify something because I maybe lost the thread here. What I understand is that commercial enterprises are not allowed on that lot in question. Is that correct and is that unequivocal or is there some doubt about that?
That's correct.
Alright.
Well, there is some vagueness there though in that. If you, when you look at a campground, when you look at the public and private recreational area, what is the definition of that and how does that lead into a campground?
I believe that, I understand that if it's a commercial enterprise, it can't go into that lot. And if that's unequivocal, then that leads me to my next question, which is my real question. Assuming that that's unequivocal, what is the risk in waiting to allow the process of the scheduled ordinance revision to go through?
The thing with the ordinance and giving it review, we are working with some professionals on that and attorneys, so hopefully, and I do see us, I've been on this board for a while now, we do piecemeal this and I think it's biting us right in the butt because groups will come in, Sabino, whatever, and we'll make a decision and then we have to clarify for you people what's happening to you. So when we had a coheseness, and here it does say too, I just want you to, it says involving minimal structural development. So they're not going to be able to put anything big there.
But what is minimum? We don't have a definition of this. Or structure?
Can I just make, I'm not sure my point was clear. It seems to me that there is no risk in allowing the process to go forward as it's scheduled. Unless someone can point out a risk, I personally am comfortable with the October meeting where, you know, everything is done carefully and consciously and, you know, trying to avoid future...
And what would be really helpful is to have you guys part of this process.
I'll be a part of that.
Because we, over the years, have missed so many things and as we grow and grow and grow, we have these people wanting to come in and take over our town. And the best way to do this is with your input because we are going to miss things.
I would like to say, I come from a town that was taken over and all this stuff is just, well, it's not even just beginning in West Bath, but I had to leave my town. I'm a nurse, my husband is a sculptor, we couldn't afford to live there. Everything changed and it changed rapidly, like in the blink of an eye. And so I don't know how long these takes, I don't know where the risks are in waiting till October, but I will say that things need to be very clear.
Well, and there's a chance that the ordinances aren't completed for the October meeting as well. So there's nothing set in stone that says the ordinance review is going to be done for the town.
What's the October begin?
There is no October.
Oh, I thought you said October, something's...
Yeah, what was said earlier is that the process would likely start revising the land use ordinance in October.
So starting, so now we're even that far.
What's the possibility at this point in time of somebody coming in wanting, we're too late into the season, so I think we'd already be moving on to next year?
I'm just to clarify again, is commercial is not allowed?
Right. But it doesn't, it's recreational.
No, I'm not saying, if someone puts a campground up, I assume they're going to charge somebody some kind of fees to be in there, right?
That's public and private recreation. How do you, what does public mean?
Commercial, money.
But it says it's allowed.
Public means like government-owned.
No.
That's public.
Yes, that's the problem. It's wide open to interpretation.
So we don't have a clear understanding. So we'd have to deny it until we have a clear understanding.
I tell you, that's what we're here for.
Right, we're here, the planning board could not explain this any better than you folks are claiming and we hopefully have to live there. And I assume other people in town are in the same situation we are and would want something and have established our neighborhood. So we're trying to be proactive. We don't want to, you know, be opposing anybody. We're trying to be proactive. We see this as a potential problem and we'd like your help with it.
And I think we're giving you a guarantee that we are going to help. We started this process a while ago. We are working with MCAG. You actually have a, what do I want to say? We have some money, a grant that was given to us to help us with this process. So I, we've started it even before this issue arrived. And I think that we can postpone any planning board because we don't have a clear definition that we should, I don't know if we can do a moratorium.
I'd like to find out what a moratorium is, if that...
Yeah, we're going to have to look into moratorium law.
Yeah, because that may be a temporary, so in the, and I'll rephrase why I say there's an October meeting. We have a comp plan that needs to be voted on at a town meeting. So I don't see what the harm would be if we're in October or whatever that time happens to be. That we tighten the language on something like this if it's appropriate. And I feel that if there's enough concern, it would be appropriate for the town to vote on that. And I think that, you know, there is some significant vagueness across all of our ordinances and we've definitely been pinched by that and are trying to rectify that. We don't have an end date as to when that's going to be, but we do know when the comp plan is ready, that will be a town meeting and I don't see a problem at that time adding an ordinance or two, which we've done in the past to that.
A commercial project is not allowed in that area. So the idea of having a commercial campground in that area is not, that's not going to happen.
The campground has not been stipulated as commercial or residential in our definition, that's the problem.
That's dictionary definition of it.
But that's what our ordinance is, we have different definitions in the ordinance book to stipulate that.
I don't know what you mean, Ms. Joey.
Couple of questions. It's kind of making me nervous when you said you've been pinched in vagueness. Who is guiding the planning board?
The ordinance book is the bible to the planning board.
And where does that come from? Like you're saying MCAG, can you define that?
The also, in tricky questions, we are advised by our attorney. The planning board has recourse to the attorney. However, many times, she has had to say, "This is vague. This is why we are undertaking the total revamping of the land use ordinance." That's what needs to happen. Because it is, it may be true that other areas in town are facing similar issues. Don't we want to solve them all, all at once? Shouldn't the whole consideration of where our commercial growth takes place, where are recreational, what kinds of recreation, what's the definition so that everybody understands that public means it's open to the public? Not, you have to pay to get in, that's private.
But that's a definition and that's what we don't have for that. And so I think it's, I, if there's enough people, you know, maybe petition it if you aren't getting what you want. You need to figure out how, if this is that important, you know, get signatures on it and write it to the town because that's certainly a way to elevate your feelings on this.
And I also want to caution you that if you all want to make a decision about how your neighbor uses their land, those things will also apply to you. And you are asking to have your own property rights impinged upon for your convenience at this point, for your desires at this point. Do you want to be making these decisions for 100 years from now? Those are questions that need to be considered as we are looking at a whole use plan for the town and for the land use ordinances. It's not just one place in the town that's being affected. We know what the pressures are.
I guess what makes me nervous is the planning board is our representatives from the town, just like the school board. And when you're saying we've been pinched, the expertise is coming from where?
So these laws or these ordinances have been written years and years...
Back in the 70s.
Remodified and remodified and re...
Written by?
We have...
Written by whom?
By the planning board.
By the town meetings?
The town meetings. When you go to town meetings, you usually, this year, I think they voted on two or three ordinance changes. So...
I think she wants those midcoast economic development.
Okay. I just, I'm kind of nervous about that, like, who's the right?
They see the, they see all town ordinances, so it helps, it helps them see our gaps in what we have in today and help us clarify. But, you know, it's hypothetically speaking, if we did it, if we changed a couple ordinances at this, at the review of our comp plan and we had to alter them down the road, that's not a crime. So they can be, they've been edited before and can be edited again, they may need to be edited in 20 years again.
But I want to say, these go, you guys vote on these and I have heard very little feedback at any town meetings. These things just seem to get passed straight through. I caution you to really look at these ordinances when they're brought to you and say, "Hey, what is this? This doesn't make any sense. This says recreational, what does that mean?" I mean, you have to take some ownership of that too. And I see a lot of things go through there, I'm like, hm, I don't know. So this is your town? When you hear that those are being voted on, ask the questions.
My other concern is I met with, at Christine's recommendation, I met with Jonathan and we went over quite a few of the ordinances and one was if someone chose to buy it to develop it, there is a timeline and that's a pretty narrow timeline. So when you're talking about, let's wait and see how it goes, that makes me a little nervous.
If the contract came in tomorrow?
Right.
How would it be addressed at the planning board?
And there was, yeah, and he said, "There's a timeline" and I, you know, I reviewed it with him and he said it could be shorter. If they have their ducks in order, these people know what they're doing, they can come in and this can happen fairly quickly. So I guess when you're saying wait and see, that makes me nervous.
A plan, a plan that's presented to the planning board, that meets all the stipulations of the ordinance?
Right.
We don't have, we cannot deny it at that time. If it meets our, if it meets the ordinance standards, it has to be approved.
Right. That's what makes me nervous about waiting to see.
But why can't we deny it? If they can't deny it, they don't want recreationalness, how that's defined.
I guess that's what makes me nervous is just saying, "Let's wait and see" because you have someone that has lawyers come in and know what they're doing and this can happen fairly quickly from what I've been talking with Jonathan about.
Planning board gets a, an application if it doesn't meet the criteria. They can decide, they have, they have the authority to say no.
But they have, if these lawyers come in, you know, this is a four million dollar piece of property.
There's a whole...
Want you to bring lawyers in?
There's high rate.
But it's really expanded.
But they, the whole process, the whole process is a process.
And if they're denied at the planning board, they actually go to the board of appeals, which is a whole nother element that they could choose to approve it at that time and then approve.
And do you have something to say?
No, no.
The period?
First question is, how big is this piece of property? How many acres?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, so our residential requires three acres per home, correct? So that would be how many homes that could be built in there?
And that's a TBA standard. Should, early 2003, it actually becomes two per lot as well.
Okay, so there's potentially minus twenty, so nine homes going in, potentially eighteen homes going in on this piece of property? So if you object to that, are we going to put a moratorium on how many homes can go on single piece of property?
No.
No, not. Because a campground's going to have to go through a main drinking water program, also going to have to have DEP permit, stormwater look, you know? It's going to have massive infrastructure. It's a commercial venture. I believe the ordinance has already dealt with it.
But there's a gray area of the problem.
Suzanne can probably go along with everything I'm saying on this because she drives by a house that is simply that, she lives down here.
Slowly, drive by slowly.
Dan Coe is a very unique piece of property. We're not talking about 28 acres of open land somebody can develop. We're not talking about that. The reason why we need campground defined specifically is because where we live, from telephone pole right down to the back pen, 300 feet, we bought a Dan Coe. I can stand on my back deck, I can look over there and see the field and probably about less than 100 and maybe 50 feet, I'm in the field over there. There's about three acres of field. Then there's the main house that's set up on a ridge area and then there's what they call a lodge area. And then all of that that goes on the backside of my property and two, three neighbors beside us is all woods and then gradually down to the tributary in the metal which is mostly at high tide, it's alright, but then at low tide is all metal. But still, that could be considered water, whatever, like kayaks or whatever. The problem being is, the way that's being marketed right now is being marketed to people out of state, nobody around here. They haven't even put any signs on the road, they didn't want no neighbors to know about it. They put it high end so it goes out of state. What we're worried about is a developer is going to come in. A developer, okay. The way that ordinance is written, no buildings and stuff like that, okay, you wouldn't need to. That whole field that's two or three acres, we could just make it just like metalwork. Everybody brings in a tow behind trailers, fill that whole field right up. The lodge, oh yeah, we could turn that into like an on-site store for people to get their supplies in. Oh yeah, and all that wood area up in there, we could go up in there and make individual campsites for tents and you could have out of how many people out in there tenting. So now you're talking about a whole establishment down there. So now you're talking about a whole establishment down there, and that's what we're trying to clarify, so something like that don't happen. That our neighborhood is already established, you got people that live on Damned Cove, that's going to go by all of that every single day, she lives right directly across from the field, and that's what we're trying to not have happen.
Well, I don't need to sound too unsympathetic here, but if you've lived in this town for a while.
I have since eighty-four.
And since nineteen forty-eight, there have been tremendous changes. I looked at houses across the cove from me where there were never cows, there were always cows and trees, and now there are houses. We cannot stop some things. We have more protection now than we've ever had in the past, including all those departments of environmental protection things, the water quality things, the sewage things. All of those things would have to be done, as Perry was pointing out, before anybody could establish any kind of commercial venture. And commercial ventures are not permitted in this zone.
So what I just described, would you consider that commercial, or would that be under the heading of recreational?
Certainly the store would be commercial, I don't know if the campsites would be recreational or not.
If you have to pay for it to get there, it's commercial. So what is, what would a private campsite be? What we do every summer at my family farm, which is the cousins come in and camp. That's private, nobody else can come there, and nobody pays to come there. Well, we all chip in for the picnic, but nobody pays, that's private. You can do it in your own backyard if you want to. You don't want to know what happens in my backyard. That's, that's a private recreational area. Okay, that's curious to me, why would that even be defined? To me, that's just like, yeah, a party at your house, why, I guess.
Probably someone doesn't come in and say, they're camping in their backyard and that's not allowed.
Or they're camping, I'm going to join them, and you don't know them. Awkward. You don't have to be invited.
Mind if you look at, do you guys have the ordinance here? Item seventeen right above that, individual private campsite, one per lot.
Yep.
So that's, I mean, you know-
Could you say that again, please, Suzanne?
Item seventeen on page twenty-three of the land use ordinance states, individual private campsite, one per lot, subject to planning board approval. So apparently we've set a boundary. But, so we have, so there's things in here, and that is allowed in residential and rural residential. Those are the only two places that happens to be allowed in, is one lot. So there's, we're putting boundaries, but in a very vague element. So I think it's just, I'm a fan of having it done sooner or later, not everyone here is on this board, so I, you guys, if it's that important to you, I'd say get a petition and decide what's how.
How do we do that?
I can explain that at a later time, there's, it's basically, you draw a paper and you get signatures. At that point, you have a petition for a town meeting. The select board can decide whether to hold a special town meeting or to have that at the next regular town meeting. So that doesn't necessarily expedite it, but it is a good way to bring it to the town meeting, the select board won't put it on a town meeting. And we have a town meeting coming up for the comp plan at some point in the near future.
A petition shows support.
If you gather enough signatures. Which at that time, we could have this addressed sooner or later.
Okay, who can tell us how many signatures?
I think it's around a hundred fifteen.
Only like a hundred eighteen.
If I could just add, you said about participation, I served on the planning board for a number of years, I served on the comp plan committee.
Excuse me, I can't hear if you're talking?
I served on the planning board for a number of years, years ago, I served on the comp plan committee, so I had some kind of idea of what's going on, and I knew what grievances. We brought this to the planning board, they couldn't answer it for us, it went to the lawyer. She gave a vague answer, and just for your knowledge, one of the things that they do is go to the main state statutes on these things, and their language was just as vague as one is written in our ordinances. So that's why we're here, we have a problem.
And we are addressing it. And you have the ability to get a hundred and fifteen-ish people, whatever that number happens to be, to raise this to an elevation of concern that then will be officially addressed.
When Max comes and he's working on these things, is there room for the public to come?
Oh, it's all public.
Every meeting has a public, so that, maybe the people here, if you have the emails, could be divided to them.
Of course.
Oh, yeah, all of our meetings are.
So that would be really important, because the more you give your input to Max, who does this for lots of towns, we may be able to really make this clear.
And perhaps we should, we'll start, only if you're going to come, we'll go over to the firehouse, so more people can come.
Yeah, it's like with any other meeting of any committee or board, the chair doesn't have to allow public comment, but you're certainly allowed to be in the room. So generally, a chair would allow the public to speak.
When is this meeting?
We don't have to say. We still don't have a contract signed.
We're in the process of saying we have the contract for this part of the planning process.
I see, and this meeting is, or this person is the person that will oversee the revamping of the?
Yes, he's a planner for MCOT, which is the Midcoast Council of Governments, and essentially they're planning and economic development as a whole. So they help a lot of municipalities tighten up their ordinances and help communities with economic development issues.
And that proposal is item number three on tonight's agenda, if you want to stay for that.
That's, that's the expert you were looking for.
And he was guiding the planning board? Yeah, and it would be over several meetings, so it's going to be a process.
And those meetings are recorded online, so if you can't make it to all of them, you can always tune in.
And when they're done, they will be clear, they will be readable, they will be understood by an ordinary person who won't have to come to the planning board and say, what does this mean? So that they can be implemented fairly and openly and honestly, with fewer opportunities for shady people to come in and take advantages, take advantage of us. Well, we need to stop the interpretation, because everybody has a different interpretation.
Which makes it a difficult challenge, should it be legally brought forth in that matter. So that's really, clarity is going to be to our benefit to preserve what's bad as we see it today.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, is there like a preservation plan, or is this a part of the whole thing? You want to set one? Comprehensive plan is nearing the end of its development, and it is in process. The chair of the comprehensive plan committee is right here, Mr. Hennessy. And the committee has been very diligently on it, and have, they have had input from all aspects of the community as they've gone along. It's been a very thorough process. And the copies of the plan are available in the town office. Oh, so the plan is done?
It is not done, it's mere completion. It's still a review process.
It's actually a chance to review it, and if you have seen any significant- How long is the plan? How many pages?
I don't think they're posted right now, to be honest.
It's worth reading.
It's not first.
Yeah, I'd like to, but how long is it? Are we talking like Bible proportions? Sixty pages, reasonably town board size. As thorough as you would want it to be, considering that it is a five to ten year plan for the town. It has to be thorough. It contains sociological information, geographic information, economic information, lots and lots of information, and it gives proposed plans for going forward. It's very thorough, and I, it may not be exciting as you know that you're reading, but it is very important. Everybody should have a look at it.
And I encourage you, that's item two on tonight's agenda.
Set aside enough time so that you can really read it, it's thorough.
Can you guys, are there copies of it?
I don't think there are, because it's not, it's in review.
So we can send it to you and you can-
Oh, they have review copies and they're available, I have one at my house.
Did you say if you send it over?
Yeah, I can send it by email, or we can make hard copies if you prefer.
If you'd like to send me one, I can send it to the purpose here.
Yeah, sure.
And that would be good, that would be great. There's been hundreds and hundreds of hours put into it.
Oh, yeah.
It's been, too.
I mean, it just fades with the historical section on it.
And the comp plan is reviewed by the state for compliance with Maine's Growth Management Act. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of scrutiny about-
I've been at the state house for the last four months, it's been like getting going on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty, there are certain parameters that we have to work within.
Yes.
If it's to be accepted by the state.
And we only have comprehensive plans. I can remember a time when we didn't, which accounts for some of the things that are already in existence here. But we have comprehensive plan because of state regulations.
And if we don't, we can't get grants.
If we don't, we're in serious trouble anyway, so. It behooves us to have a plan. And it behooves us to be the people who are making it.
And we should also mention that when we go through our review of the land use ordinance, it will have several layers of review. It would first be reviewed by MCOT and the planning board, and then when they're done with their review, it will go to our attorney. So it will be reviewed for, you know, legal stuff.
And at this time, we have one, if not two, available seats on the planning board for the, I want to say the second, the-
Alternate.
Alternate, that's where I'm thinking, so at least one, if anyone's interested in getting involved in the forefront of this, there is an opportunity for you to do that.
And then there's public hearing, two public hearings, and, you know, the town has an opportunity to review it too.
And they're always, those meetings are always posted on the town calendars that are on the town website, so.
And if you're not on Carly's email list yet, that's a good way to stay informed.
Traditionally, second Tuesday of the month.
So could you just, you've talked a lot, can you just kind of summarize what, where we go from here?
So, I mean, it's if you want to pursue the petition route, that advantage through Carly, she would give you the guidelines, you send her the protocols, you get the signatures required, and it certainly floats that to the top of the attention of what this is. I would encourage at least one of you to consider becoming the alternate on the petition, we'll stay informed throughout the entire ordinance process. We'd love new folks to get involved with the town. And then outside of that, you know, it's, it's going to come down to during the ordinance review or a special meeting, if prior to that, and the ordinance review is, this is what we do with the MCOT.
Right.
It's coming in the near future, but what is actively done within the planning board premise, like on a monthly? Well, the planning board meetings are the second Tuesday of the month, I don't know how the review is going to, if it falls part of the meeting, if it's the last hour of the meeting, I don't know how that's going to be set up.
So actually, you could, both things, whether you do the petition or you wait for this process, it's probably going to happen at the same time. So that's totally up to what do you guys want to do as a group. So maybe if we really were concerned, the petition sort of demonstrates upfront, like we need to consider.
But it's important.
Probably happen at the same time.
It may answer that too, though. Do you think we need a lawyer to start the petition language, or is that something we can do ourselves? Generally, it's done by the voter, you know, by the official. It's been sought the lawyer for the language of the petition.
No.
Is there any guidance on the language of the petition? Do you have that currently?
I can speak with you about that tomorrow, if you want to come to the office.
And it is in process, rest assured, it is in process. It is being done carefully, thoroughly, and with concerns for the entire town and for all property owners. I'm sure that you wouldn't want your heirs to be constrained, unless you do, and if you do, set up a trust. Well, no one's saying they can't sell their land, it's just a matter, I think it's just a concern of how, how it's used.
Well, this is not the only parcel it refers to. Any other, you know, vacant land or whatever is in the language.
And which is a major part of town.
This calls true to that as well, it protects, you know, the utilization uncertainty that we have in some of the language. So is that important to you?
But you are volunteering to restrict your own property rights when you pass an ordinance concerning property. So we should all bear that in mind, that you are not only binding your neighbor, you are binding yourself, and you're binding your children and grandchildren as well. So those, those, those things are important.
But it may also, you may also feel that you're protecting your rights as well.
We are going to move on, I think we have a direction here, both can happen at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone want to stay for the rest? No one comes to our school board meetings?
What's the next item on the?
Next item is the comp plan discussion.
Okay.
And following that is the planning assistance proposal. Your teaching right here.
All right, this is item number two, comprehensive plan discussion concerning submission of the plan to the state to determine consistency in the Maine's Growth Management Act. The board will discuss the timing of submission of the draft comprehensive plan to the state for review. David, do you?
We're getting to the, to the end of this process after two years. And I think that the comp committee, in the next six weeks, it'll be finished, and then it can be presented to the state of Maine for their approval. And if they do need any changes necessary, we can come back and meet on those, and see if we agree. If we agree, no problem, disagree, we can appeal those back to the state. So it's, it's impossible, so it's still some time we don't have.
Do we have any idea about the review by the state, like, take?
One to two months.
One to two months?
And I should also note that there is, I didn't realize this sooner, maybe you did, David, but we have to give thirty days notice for the public hearings and-
Yes, but I think we get the plan back in the state, there'll be time at that point to special public hearings.
So when will we have the opportunity to review it as entirely and suggest?
Yeah, right now, I think I've sent it out, you guys have been copying on everything, so you should have everything that is current.
I'm, I'm curious, if you see something in the proposed comp plan, what would you do?
I spoke to Christine about it today, actually.
Yeah, and there's, there's one thing, I've been reviewing the second half of the comp plan for Max, because the staff has been reviewing changes. There's a few things that I'm going to propose.
Oh, we haven't, we haven't had with the process yet.
Right, because the second half, you're not, you're still reviewing it as a comp plan committee. One of the things that I would suggest after reading the public service section, or whatever it's called, I can't quite remember the name of the section. It does list public facilities, and it lists the town buildings. And I'm just wondering if we list the town buildings and we have a list of cemeteries, it would make sense to me to have a very straightforward list of town property. I really, I don't understand why that's left out. And, you know, I'm just, we own about twenty-five parcels, and I believe for transparency's sake, it makes sense to just list them, map and line.
It was, it was done that way because they were listed in the town office anyhow. We thought that if you're interested, you could go to the town office and hit the list.
But it's part of what the town is in the moment, and I think it's, again, for transparency.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to put that out there because it will be something that I send to Max for the comprehensive plan's consideration. Because it's just, I like a document that presents the information.
Would that include, um, properties that happen, um, that are tax acquired but not, that we haven't taken possession of?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't think that would make sense. I think it would be.
Things that we.
Properties that we've owned for a long time that are listed under inhabitants of the town, let's say. And just again, with very general information. You know, not singling out any one parcel. But just, you know, we have the town buildings. And I would actually add some additional information to that, like an address or a map and lot number, some identifier. And then a list of the other land-only parcels that the town owns. But I think it's, it's a really good read, it's clean. It's shorter than it was the last time.
It's readable.
And I, I think it's, it's a good document. I mean, I'm really not finding much that I would change.
The committee's done an incredible work.
It's been two years of tremendous time and effort.
Okay, business item four. Purchasing three books. Why did I skip that one? Planning assistance proposal with new post-council of government, second draft for review.
So the, the only question I have of this. Is, so, we asked one question for clarification first. Are we definitively in a designated growth area of two or more? Is that, is that a speculation, we have that for sure?
Yes.
Because that entitles us to the $10,000, um, amount. And I think that that needs to also cover the attorney fees for review through our law firm. Correct, for these ordinance?
Yes, if you're planning on paying Jensen there, out of that pot of money, yes, it's included that.
So I think, I think that, um, and I absolutely am not opposed to having Max do more with us, he's been fantastic. Um, but I think we have to reduce the $10,000 commitment to five. Um, and, and should we need to allocate more out of the 10, we can, but I don't think we should commit to that at this point, knowing that we also have attorney fees to cover during this whole process.
And I'm, I'm fine with changing the dollar figure. I think Max just plugged in the 10 grand because it was kind of this arbitrary number that he thought would be a good starting point based on the Department of Economic and Community Development's program where they're giving money to towns. Not all of that money would be able to be used for planning assistance.
So are we allowed to pay our attorney out of that one?
Yes, yes. And we're also allowed to.
Pay for advertising.
Put in for staff time, um, you know, be keeping a list of staff hours that are dedicated to this and advertising and other incidental costs that are associated with it. So.
I'm a little slow on my math. $65 an hour.
Not to exceed. It is not to exceed the amount.
I'm, could you let me finish my question? Um, $65 an hour, $5,000, put somebody to do the math. How many hours does that give us? E2.
E2?
After my, thank you. Math was down in my strong suit. I can read, but I can't do math. Eighty-two hours, is that enough?
It's 76.92 hours.
And I should also point out before we get too far into this conversation that we already approved $2,000 for, um, review of the land use ordinance. So that should, that should be made part of this stuff too. Separate from the monies that we would pay him.
So we should.
Seven and three instead.
So when you say $5,000 of the grant and then plus initial $2,000 committed.
If you want to get that mini-gritty, otherwise you could just leave it up to me and to Max to, uh, follow the budget. And Max certainly knows what the money can be used for.
Well, I, we, we can commit to 5,000 at a minimum. Is, and then should we need more, plus the 2,000 that we have. But out of this grant that we have for 10?
Yes.
I think we need to, to make sure that half of that, a portion of that is allocated to the attorneys and other fees that the town will experience during this process.
Yeah, and the, um, the agreement isn't written specifically to use those grant funds. The agreement is written to sort of solidify an agreement with MCOT that we are going to be using Max or another member of the staff.
No, it's Max only.
To, yeah, to work with us.
For, so have we already made application for this? That there was a, um, did we do the payment process to receive it from the state?
Yes.
We've already applied.
We've already committed.
And they've committed to town, okay. So, um, I, I think just changing it to five and then.
I, I would propose changing it to spend it to include the 2,000 that we already committed to.
Yep, I would refer to that myself. Because that allows us to spend all the money.
Oh, I think we'll spend quite a bit.
Sure, we have $10,000. Why we can't let the administrator determine?
Yeah, I, I'm responsible for the budget anyway. So we'll certainly be following how we're spending the money.
And the reporting is going to be more so we update the rates on what you spend. And if you go over, you'll let us know. I mean, we're talking about $3,000, if they can't trust you with $3,000 and how it's being spent.
I'll go along with that. Okay, I'm good for that.
I think knowing that we let Chris be determined how the $10,000.
It needs to follow the guidelines. That's the only piece we have to follow, we can't, going over.
That's kind of a good one, too. She should.
That's on the, if I make a mistake, it's on me.
Business item four, second draft for the purchasing of bid procedures with relative review. Changes to the first draft are made based on the feedback from the previous select board meeting. An additional section was added to address public work purchases of the 50,000. Does that highlight, did you hear somewhere, Christine, or what message was that?
Yeah, it's, um, redlined.
See?
I noticed when I was reviewing it again that we left that section out because we were so focused on change orders and other things.
Does it start the town, should we wire our contractor subcontract, is that the part? No. Yeah, this was, this was the 50,000, was the motion that was made during the meeting, two meetings ago.
It's the level that requires sealed bids.
Yep.
Which I just borrowed the language from earlier in the policy and kept it about the same. And then I incorporated the other changes that you asked for.
So over 50,000 except for written manufacturer exclusion by law, all public work services for construction warranted at least one year. That was one thing we had asked for. If the road commission is a contractor or agent, officer, employee, subcontractor, the contractor, only the person, purchase and agent may approve the change order. And the engineering firm must provide the reason for the change order in writing. Those, I just went over those with the highlighted changes, yeah. I'm not just reading everything.
I will, we approve the, um, purchasing of bid procedures as presented.
I accept that, all in favor? Business item five, solid waste and recycling contract. The first draft is provided for review in discussion. The comments that appear on the draft are made by the town attorney. The original agreement that became effective in 2007 is provided for comparison purposes.
Do we extend it to what, December of this year?
Yes, to the end of the year. So some of the questions or the comments that Mark made, I don't have any historical knowledge to answer. Like, for example, when it comes to the Cartel Act. I'm not sure what the Cartel Act encompassed originally.
Do we have a deed or anything to?
Well, we probably do, but he, he thinks we should, instead of just saying the westerly portion of the premises, he thinks we should define it a little bit better than that.
I believe the catalog was originally deeds into town for recreational purposes only. And then the areas, I guess, changed later on.
We should probably clarify that.
Well, it was clarified in the.
In the deed.
Yes.
Another one of those weird.
It wasn't clear. I'm pretty sure they would not consider the transfer station for purposes only.
There's a ton of deer out there. Oh, like that.
Oh, so it's a hunting facility?
That's recreation.
Speaking of that, make sure you talk about the new movies today.
So if anybody has an idea of how to better define that section, big thoughts?
We even referenced the deed within here. The, the, if it was given in the deed, you say lot caged, and that gives you the specific of how it was.
Yeah.
I mean, what if the deed changed, it, it, all you have to say is, as reference on page, book and year, whatever the, the.
Are you concerned about defining it on a map? That even depiction of it?
Well, if the attorney's asking us to define it, I think the best way is to find it in that form. Because then it's not, it's not us making that up, it's a, it's a legal description. If that's what the attorney's asking for, we should probably.
She's also asking, is, is an important of this property used for solar, solar lease, well, we don't know.
Yes, the answer to that is yes.
Yeah, and I think he's just bringing it full circle, you know. If we're defining it as the westerly portion of premises, does that now include the other parcel, the portions of the parcel that we plan to lease?
Right.
For our leasing, so. I, I've been thinking about it, but I haven't come up with a great solution of how to better define the area. Unless we depict it on a map, which.
Has that survey been recorded from the lease, do we know?
Well, it sounds like they're currently registering deeds.
Right. Well, that, that, that's easy enough to put in a case. But the problem is, is that deed at the time, didn't it, it was a parcel that didn't include solar?
I'm, I'm going to suggest that one of the, um, long memories about where lines are and so forth is Ron Deal. Perhaps Ron would be a good person to tell us what we might use as a demarcation without going.
We already have this survey.
Westerly, what's, but where does the westerly portion begin?
And I'm wondering if we already have a map that, that shows the transfer station, the things we want.
I'm guessing it's on the survey that the solar facility did, they did a survey.
Possible.
And that's what I'm saying, that, you know, if it was recorded, if that survey was recorded.
It said it was, we're in here, so I think we just need to.
Right. But where does the westerly portion begin? But that would be on the survey, there'd be.
No. The line, it, it will show us where west is, but it won't show us where the portion begins. No, the survey would, the survey would have. The westerly portion of the premises acquired by the town doesn't, it says where, it says where the lot is, but it doesn't say where westerly begins. Well, the other thing was it never really. Where, where does, yeah, there's no place, there's no place where westerly begins. Most of the town's not surveyed, so I. It needs to be specifically how many feet back of the, of the building or something like that. I think that's, I think that that's. So I think that is the right answer because at least that most of the survey.
We have a, we have a recent survey that I believe the solar company did that we leased the property to.
Yes, but we cannot determine where westerly is.
You cannot have a survey. If a survey was done, you'd be able to see the.
We can tell where west is, but we don't know where.
I'm pretty confident they laid out the transfer station on the survey.
Yeah, I get I have a number back at this point. Because now I'm thinking that we need to include a map.
This is.
They might be fast. There's something that actually defines the buildings that are reused by the transfer facility.
Right.
Okay, good, enough of that.
Because westerly, westerly begins here. Okay, capitalization is required.
Okay, wait, wait, we have, I have more.
Oh, oh, that's more.
I want to make sure that we include everything that the board is looking for in this agreement. And I know that you haven't had time to look at it yet. So please take time and review it. You'll notice that I included some new things that I talked to the facility manager about, like a free dump day for residents. And to expand the Tuesday hours. So we're trying to get a little bit more.
Has the hazardous waste day been discussed or included? Wasn't the Brunswick doing one and, don't we need it?
Yeah, I think we're still relying on that and Brunswick to.
Share has to. Waste. It would be nice to have one of our own where we weren't being charged an arm or leg.
Yeah, we can talk about that if, if.
Well, that was something that they brought up, so I thought they were interested in that. What do you think, Stella?
If they'll do it for a little cost. Did, well. The cost paid to the city of Bath is really hazardous waste.
What, what was the fee we paid to Brunswick and Bath for that?
It depends on how much.
It's like $30 a unit or something.
Yes, it depends on how much stuff people bring on a particular election area.
So what have we paid in the past? I don't know, that's a question of the treasurer. But I know that, I was just asking, because Cassella had suggested.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that.
Just making notes here. And, and I, when I, I chatted with Christine, we should, in addition to that, we talked about maybe offering a shredding day. Because we had the shredder, I saw the shredder.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be part of.
No, 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 I was talking about like town, town stuff and then.
Yeah, something.
Drug recycling day, also, where the sheriff's department does that. I'm forgetting a line on everything else. The robbery does a shredding event as well.
In section 11, um, when we're talking about the access and use fee, Mark asked if you want to set an annual escalator rather than keeping the fee the same throughout the contract period.
Yes.
Um, I thought that was a good idea. Do you have any idea of what percentage per year might be reasonable start?
So is this our fee that we're paying?
Not that we're paying.
That we collect?
That we collect.
So this from other towns, is it the dump it that, um, what we get from other towns using the facility? We absolutely want that situation.
And we did talk about at one point in time that they should be involved in keeping the upkeep of that road.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's going to be feasible. I think we have, I think it's preferred that we base our fees on us taking care of the road.
Then we probably should set a higher fee because that road, if you center view, is probably more than any other road in this town.
Right. I could.
Well, I guess we should have that discussion with them and see what their position is. If they wanted to put, what, what are their thoughts on, because we talked about the damage to the road in the last meeting with them, so it wouldn't be a surprise if we brought it up again. Ask them, what's their thought on how to maintain the road bed?
Okay, I would like to give them a contract to review, so that they come to the meeting prepared. So this would, what we present to them before they meet with you, it wouldn't necessarily be final, it would still be a draft form. But I think that it's respectful, we give them something to review so that they know kind of what we're asking for.
That is a public road, a town road, right?
Yeah.
So you want a private company repairing a public road?
If they're damaging it.
I, I, I think it'd be better to put it in, in a fee.
I think it's clean.
And not, and not a permanent, never retaining public road.
No.
Right.
Mark, another question I have here, vehicle access hours, is that 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. the benefit time they're using?
Okay, Dan, I think I can do that.
I'm not sure, it's the material processing hours. I'm not sure. It's the material processing hours. What second?
It's nobody. Yeah, make sure you're looking at the red line.
No, this isn't bad.
There's, you can go up there.
This is.
So what, that was under?
The hours of operation.
Section 12.
Section 12?
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's been changed. Okay. One of all, vehicle access, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. daily, when you preserve it.
Is that, is that what it was?
That's what it is now.
That's summer hours, winter hours.
Vehicle access.
Well, I guess they can verify the hours. This is, you know, what.
But this is, this is what was created.
I don't want to go back to being woken up to all the noise that was there before that we've kind of put a stop to. I think 4:00 a.m. is a little early.
Yeah.
For that to be technical vehicles.
Well, that's a conversation that you'll have to have with them.
Well, I think we've had it many times, so.
Right.
So.
But the, the 4:00 a.m. is limited.
It does say, for activities from 4:00 to 6:00, for the limited.
To two vehicles of leaving.
No more than two vehicles. Which can just make as much noise as.
Right.
So it needs some guarantee that we're not going to go back to what we went through a year ago.
Right.
Well, that, I think that wasn't that people coming in that weren't supposed to be there also.
Yes.
I think that, because that's what the video showed.
This is what they're doing now.
I'm right.
Which is.
His activity over there.
So we should say that the, we should be very specific on the two vehicles exiting. No one else enters until.
How would they know that?
Because this says, all it says is egress. That's what I mean.
Right.
They know on video, and that's how we figured out what it was.
How are the truckers going to know there's only two vehicles in it?
They're really leaving. They're, they're there overnight. They leave to. They're exiting at 4:00 a.m.
Okay. Let's just have that discussion just so we can verify that we don't ramp it back up to.
So vehicle access hour shouldn't be 4:00 a.m. It should be, it should say vehicle egress hours for two specifically are 4:00 a.m. No other ingress until 6:00 a.m.
I just don't want to see a bunch of townspeople come in here and then ask me that. Well, it says material receiving at 6:00 o'clock and egress at 4:00 a.m.
But 4:00 a.m., it says vehicle access hour 4:00 a.m. What does that mean?
Right, maybe it just needs to be egress.
I think it should say activities from 4:00 to 6:00 shall be limited to the egress of no more than two vehicles. That's what it says.
So let's all read it and at the next meeting day, we'll see if there's anything in there we can't leave. And I think the road is definitely a part of it.
So how do we, how do we determine? The evaluation of prepare to that road, we should have the road commissioner go out and tell us what is needed, what, that they have to contribute to that. And we should have that conversation with Oliver Concrete, too. Who's the other user of heavy equipment on that road.
How are we going to?
I don't think it's.
They don't have a road warrant for you, so they don't really give any basis.
If I might suggest something, if we repair that road, we bring it to a higher standard so it can withstand the heavy traffic. It is a public road, but we know it's going to have open concrete, most of those trucks are 80,000. The recycling, most of those trucks are 100,000 to 120,000. So I would say our roads need to be beefed up to accommodate.
And that's because we have the road commissioner go out and tell us what is it going to take to bring that road to a passable standard? So we can transfer some of that responsibility back onto those that are using it.
I believe the state has specs on that of how a road bed needs to be constructed for different weight.
But the cost, I mean, we need to know what to build it, because we're putting into a contract.
A lot of money is what it costs to build, to build, to specifications. And, and we need to remember this going forward when we allow businesses like that to somehow going to incorporate the cost of the road. I mean, we're going to have the solar, people going in there.
The solar people actually want to use the same access as communications.
Oh, really? Presuming it's granted?
It is.
It got granted?
Yes, that's in my report.
And it's the state, but I'm glad so.
Well, we have, they haven't had that conversation yet.
We don't think so. The state, like, emergency is different than solar.
Right, but the access will be there. So it's basically Sagahaw County who would be giving permission to walk in. It would only be a few times a year.
Right, once it's built, it's marginal use, marginal access.
Well, that would be good.
Yeah.
In case anybody was wondering, on the Arthur J. Reno Road, we have a land we're leased out to a solar company and we have Sagahaw Community Communities is trying to put a tower up there for. Christine, it's all new.
Okay. Broadband. Elliot sent out a very nice note to the select board saying that he spoke with representatives from video and we weren't really, we wouldn't be eligible for obtaining grant money for a vote out. He would still like the select board to consider sending out the letter to every taxpayer noting that if they experience Comcast service that's slower than expected, they should contact Comcast and request the latest modem, as that might resolve the issue. Asking them to notify the town office that their location does not have Comcast offered. Information should be used in the next iteration of the franchise agreement. Franchise agreement expires in September 2027. The task force would like us to get on that as soon as possible. Suggested everyone look at what they're paying and decide whether they really want to pay and how they can get it. And notify the town that the select board and staff want their help to get the best service and the best deal that we can. So my question to you is, do you want to send out that letter?
I thought the, the franchise agreement was in two years.
Yeah. Was from 2017 to 2027. September.
How much is it going to cost?
I don't know how much it's going to cost, but one option, if you really would like to do it, is we can incorporate it into the tax bills.
Yes.
Which is why I'm asking how.
And you're going to be willing to do it.
People may not pay attention to a survey once they get their bills, but we have given them the opportunity.
Yes. So that sounds good.
It sounds good.
Try to figure out how to do that.
You should have, do you want them to write the survey for us so we could work on it? Push back on Elliot and see if he would write.
Well, actually, those are the questions that they.
He said it, okay.
Yeah, those are the questions that they wanted to ask. Or the points that they wanted to make to the community.
That should be fairly easy to draft.
Do you want to ask them to do a speed test so they could tell us if the area is wired properly?
So you're going to send that out and a lot of people are not going to know what you're talking about. That's the problem with that.
We are affected. It means absolutely nothing to me.
Right.
I don't give one. So save 55 cents.
That's going to be in your bill. Get the tax bill, get the tax bill.
I don't need an extra piece of paper either, so.
You may, yeah. You want to get your 55 cents.
So may DOT issue the driveway permit for the county communities facility. Proposed access road will be located to the rear of the existing rest stop on Route 1. COVID course and Austin met with county representatives and representatives from Walden and Nobles to try to bring everybody together to make sure that we were on the same page, which I really appreciate it. The only issue that came up is there is one vernicle that needs to be addressed to figure out how to deal with that before both projects can move forward. But John really feels like the county is very close to submitting something to the planning board. So I think that right now we're in really good shape.
Excuse me? If this conversation's going on.
What's that?
If the conversation's going on here.
You don't have to worry about it because we're.
Oh, well, I didn't mean to throw, chase you away, just be able to attend to the business.
MCU is applying for a housing opportunity grant in the amount of $75,000. So that would provide planning assistance for housing for Brunswick, Harpswell, and the municipalities in Sagahaw County. They are asking for a letter of support from the town of West Bath, which will give us a town-specific report if they are successful in obtaining the grant.
Absolutely.
So if, with your permission, I will write the letter of support and provide it to them.
What? What does the study involve? I'm, I'm supporting it, but I'm curious.
Yeah, the study involves, they're going to do some research to see how they could assist the communities in this area with housing supply issues.
Workforce and.
Yeah, all of it. And come up with feasible plans for the unique aspects of each community, rather than, you know, somebody coming in and saying, every town needs to do X.
Yeah.
This would be more town-specific than that kind of approach.
That sounds good. Absolutely. I'm all for that.
And the draft of the comp plan recommends that the select board consider partnering with neighboring municipalities to support higher density, affordable housing, you know, working with other communities rather than developing it in West Bath. So our comp plan supports MCU's efforts to that end. At the last meeting, Suzanne asked for an ARPA funding update to see how much money we have left. It has not been appropriated. These are just non-appropriated funds, so it doesn't include heat pumps windows. We have $38,129 left that has not been appropriated for any use.
And we've already taken and allocated for the windows out of that, or we haven't yet?
We have $10,000 for the windows that has already been appropriated.
It's likely that we would have more to spend or would need more?
It's possible that these projects will go over a little bit, and David and I talked about that during the budget process.
Yeah.
It makes sense to us if the projects are over to ask to take the money from ARPA.
Yeah.
Rather than appropriating, appropriating it from some of the.
And where are we on the heat pumps? That we have all new.
Yeah, the bins are new on 17th, so there'll be opening bins at your next meeting.
And what did we allocate for the heat pump?
$18,000. David?
How many packets for either one, the windows, you know, the, anybody pick them up yet?
Yes. We, we received their due next Thursday.
Yeah.
We received one bid for windows, and I know another one is coming. Someone was in today that was looking at windows and painting. We received one bid already for painting, nothing yet for heat pumps, but I'm expecting something. So we should get at least one bid for each project.
I have a question. What's the age of this building?
1989.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty, something like that.
Eighty, eighty-nine, something like that.
Twenty-some years, like twenty-five. And why I bring it up is all the windows and the heat pumps, the energy loss of this building is not up to standards of 2022 or one of the latest. Has there been any consideration about new siding with additional insulation? And does that ARPA money potentially upgrade this building to a more efficient building? Is that possible?
The ARPA money could cover something like that. We might have any discussions about siding.
Yeah. I'm more talking insulation because then you don't need as many heat pumps. Your building is more efficient. And if we have funds available, I'd just probably add because of the ARPA funds if that's applicable.
I'm not opposed to that. What, what is it? A ballpark siding job? I'm guessing we're going to go over on the heat pumps, because we already had.
It's more than we've got left in the power. Yeah, trust me.
No, my, my other point was if, if there was forward thought to that, then perhaps we don't need as large heat pumps at this point, say in three to five years. We're going to have upgraded insulation and siding. I, I don't know. I'm just bringing it up because I've never heard it discussed or even talked about.
No, it's not something that's been on my radar.
And I think our, I think the heat pumps from the, based upon the quote we received an update to, we're going to go above our $18,000 provision by significantly above that.
Oh, I don't know about significant. It depends how we approach it.
Let's see where the heat pumps come in and the windows.
Fair enough.
Based on initial numbers from Parker appraisal, we picked up approximately
How many? $292 million?
Yeah.
Oh, valuation, okay. That was additional.
Yes, that's our.
That's new valuation.
New value.
What was the old value?
So what's the new?
So it was a 292. Oh, that was the delta. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So we've been fielding some calls, of course, from concerned taxpayers. So when we go through the abatement process, which will be forthcoming, that value might be tweaked, I would imagine it would be. Not sure by what amount.
Can I just get one number? I got the 431,525 over the last three.
798.
Seven, nine, eight was the old value. Okay.
So once we go through the abatement process, we'll be issuing abatements. One thing I'd like the board to keep in mind when we get to commitment, which we hope is soon, is that you'll want to leave enough surplus to cover those abatements. So of course, that's kind of a stab in the dark, but you don't want to leave ample funds when you're going through the commitment process.
First year on the evaluation?
Yeah, it's pretty typical.
You have a ballpark when you go into a two commitment?
I'm hoping that it's at least by the first week of September. We're, we're wanting to get this done soon.
Anything on the audit?
No, but Bill Brewer will be standing in the room with us when we're going through the commitment.
Yeah.
So we, are we comfortable with our current commitment and the, and the audit process? Meaning, do we need to consider other companies for that?
That's probably a conversation that we can have. Of course, you heard my spiel at the last meeting. I'm very frustrated and concerned.
So that's, I mean, we need, that's, that's kind of what my point is. What, what should we be considering or looking at or?
Yeah, that's a problem. We really don't know what we need to be looking for because we haven't been able to get a handle on what the issue really is. So until we determine what the issue is, I don't think we know what to do. That's something that I'll be working on.
The number of companies that do audits is also very limited.
Yeah.
Chase stretch is going to be problematic with that.
Well, I know it's a number of towns have gone out to bid recently, RFPs for audit services, so. I know it's not just West Bath, but I'm hoping that we could figure something out to make the process better because this is.
The school can't be two hours behind. It just seems so challenging and it's not, it doesn't make sense to me that we're that far behind. To be honest, I'm flabbergasted. We are current or mere current.
So Madeline asked me to go over the process now that we've established for the people who are listening to this meeting. And basically what we're doing right now is fielding some phone calls from taxpayers. The time has closed for people to speak with Parker Appraisal. So taxpayers will not be speaking directly to Parker Appraisal. If they have concerns and they want answers about their tax bill, they are welcome to put it in writing, send it to the town office and we can be in touch with Parker Appraisal. We're also making sure that they have a copy of their property card or cards so that they can renew it on their own and see if they can determine if there are indeed discrepancies. I will be in touch with Parker Appraisal to get a copy of their cost schedules, which I don't have yet, so that we can make the cost schedules available to the taxpayers so they could say, okay, this is how much we're being valued for the first acre. And, you know, I'm being taxed for deep water. What does that mean? What is value on that? Is that?
Or was the change in value for, for title? I mean, that, I think.
Right, all of that.
So I think that's.
So their cost schedules will define that better. And we'll be hopefully providing that information soon so that when people receive their tax bill, they will be ready to fill out the abatement form.
Properly.
Properly, to make the process as efficient as possible.
Well, and for us to have a formula that we can just be like.
Yeah, because this board will be renewing all of the abatements.
Yeah.
However you decide to do that, on a schedule as part of the select board meeting, a meeting of the board of assessors separate from a select board meeting.
Just going to be a lot there.
You can determine the best way to do that.
A lot, right.
But you will be going through all of the abatements with supporting documentation.
Well, I think that, I think that's key for us to be able, you know, we can, in theory, someone should be able to tabulate their taxes based upon formulas.
Right.
So if you say I have, I have one acre on title and then another seven acres and then I have my house's export fee and has this, and you should be able to balance against what was given to you. And if it doesn't jive, then ask for your maintenance.
David?
So just to clarify, the board's going to do this, then now the assessors, right?
Correct.
So you work for the board of slackmen, not the assessors, right?
No, I work for the municipal officers.
So you, you're saying you work for both, both boards?
Yes.
Oh, the appraisal company will be involved?
They, if something reaches the board of assessment review, they will be involved.
Right.
If it's just a standard abatement that everybody understands and the select, and the board of assessors says, yes, you're entitled to this abatement, then it's very clear and it doesn't reach the board of assessment review.
So if we deny it, should it go to the board of assessment?
If they wish to take it to that.
But I'm saying the assessing team, will they be involved in the board of assessors discussions?
No.
Okay.
No, that will, this board will be the initial view of the abatement request. And if it's straightforward and everybody understands it, you calculate it, you say, yes, you're being assessed incorrectly, this is the adjustment that needs to happen, then it's easy.
I mean, if it's, if it's as easy as using a math formula against the presentation of collateral or all that.
If it's more complicated or if you deny it because you think the assessment is correct and they wish, the taxpayer wishes it to take, to take it to the board of assessment review, they have the right to do that. At that point, Parker Appraisal will be involved.
But I think publishing the fees allows them to tabulate what they believe to be accurate, which may balance against to what the bill actually is or close enough that they're, okay, fine, good. So I think it's, but it, I think that'll.